We don't have a microphone tonight, at least not at this moment. So we're going to be projecting and trying to make sure that everybody can hear. So if you can't hear, if you'll just, you know, hold up your hand and wave, we'd appreciate it. Now, the problem with not having a microphone is this meeting is intended to be a community conversation. And so I'm hoping that several of you came prepared to talk about homelessness in Talalua. And in doing so, I'm going to have to ask you to also project as much as you can. And I apologize that we don't have the microphone available right now. I am overwhelmed by the number of people who've turned out to have this conversation, this town hall. You know, homelessness is one of those kind of divisive conversations. And there's some, you've heard me say, there's some conversations that belong to a community. There's every extreme in the community from, "I don't care who you are or why you're in a situation, we're going to serve your need," to, "I think homelessness ought to be illegal and we ought to lock you up." And I think that most of us are falling somewhere in that continuum between those extremes. But what is happening, or what feels like is happening in Talalua is that the number of homeless people seems to be increasing. But we also are blaming the homeless for every problem that comes down the pike. And one of the reasons for that is because homelessness is a symptom, it's not a problem in and of itself. People become homeless because of other issues, whether that's mental illness, or drug abuse, or just financial issues. It happens. And there are all kinds of degrees of homelessness. Are you someone who's couch surfing? Are you someone who is living in your car? Or are you truly living on the streets and seeking shelter every night? So there is a wide continuum, and there isn't a right and wrong, and there isn't a solution because it's not a problem in and of itself. But what we do want to do as a community is get our numbers down. Whether it's a humanitarian concern, or a safety concern, or any other reason, we want to reduce the number of people who are homeless in Talalua. We've got a lot of great people who are working really hard at different phases or concerns. We have the ones who are feeding and sheltering on a day-to-day basis. We've got agencies that are working to counsel and to help people move out of a homeless situation. And we have entities that are looking at how much low-cost housing do we come in the area? How do we keep people falling into a situation? What I don't find is any list, here are the resources that are available, I don't have a picture of what our solution as Talalua to help reduce the number of homeless is. I don't have that picture. And I think we as a community in our conversation need to develop the picture, determine what resources we have, see what we don't have, and figure out if there's a way to get that in place. So that is why I wanted us to start the conversation, to start talking about where we are, where we're going, and how we're going to get there as related to the homeless population in Talalua. Now, I'm not an expert. There are people in this room who are dealing with homeless people on a daily basis, all day long, 365 days a year. So I'm going to turn this conversation over, but Chief King from our police department has some solutions that we as a city want to talk about doing. And I'm going to lead you from there.
Thank you, Mayor. As our mayor said, my name's Nate King, I'm the chief of police in Talalua, for those of you who don't know me. I don't know if "solutions" would be an accurate phrase for this, but I did want to talk to you a little bit about what the police department has planned moving forward in dealing with our transient population. We have assigned one of our school resource officers who's off during the summer, basically doesn't really have an assignment, to be a homeless liaison officer. Some of his general duties, basically in a nutshell, the simplistic term is, he's going to be a taxicab. Our people in Talalua who need help, who want help, which just don't have the means to get there, or don't know the resources available, he's going to drive to two places, to Cherokee Nation Career Services, or to Feed My Sheep, or to the Muskogee VA to help them connect with the services they need, or to Zoea, to get a hot meal. He's also going to do some enforcement for those people who don't want help, who are refusing to help and are being a nuisance at times, breaking the law, he's going to be enforcing the law. The one thing about this, and it's easy to do, we've done it at the police department, even hit the lung, all of our transient population into the same group. And it's just not, it's just not fair. Just like it's not fair because you have one bad deal with a police officer and then all the officers are bad. Or one, one bad teacher in your, in your school years, and so all teachers are bad. And so what we've got to learn to do is treat each individual on a case-by-case basis. And we've got to stop placing the responsibility of all our homeless on one institution, like the Zoe Institute, for instance. Sorry to call you guys out or mention you by name, but too many of us, and we were guilty of it for a while at the police department, want to put all homeless problems on Zoe. And that's, that's not their mission, that's not their goal. Their goal is to feed the hungry, their primary goal is to feed the hungry. They offer some other services, but their primary goal is to feed people who need food, feed people who don't have food. So we can't put all that responsibility on them, we can't put all the responsibility on Cherokee Nation Career Services, or Cree Oaks, or Feed My Sheep, or whoever it is. This is a community issue that continues to grow. We are seeing more serious crimes on a daily and weekly basis out of people who are transient, for lack of a better word. We had an instance this weekend in South Ridge. Mr. Wright's here and has video of it, offered video to us of it, of an individual roaming the neighborhood all hours of the morning. We arrested three people from Walmart today for shoplifting, who all admittedly are homeless. They don't have a home that they live in, they're transient people in Talalua. So what this officer's going to do is help identify these people. We have created a new label within our reporting system so we can flag people as transient. We can take that flag off when they do find housing. That not only will help our officer, who's assigned strictly to transient population, but it'll help our other officers help get people the resources, help know that we're dealing with this person over and over and over. And it will also help us report more accurate data to the city council, to our community as far as how many transient people we have in Talalua, the issues we're running into. Now, realistically, I may be off a percent or two on here, so don't beat me up too bad, but all the research I've done, and the small sample size we have in Talalua, is about half of a homeless population is realistically going to be suffering from mainly substance abuse. They're going to have a substance abuse issue. And getting people to want help, we can't make people want help, which is where the enforcement part comes in, where more stringent enforcement as far as issuing citations, affecting arrests, is going to take place. And some of you may think this is crude, some of you may think it's cold or rude, but quite frankly, those people who continue to be a problem, who are breaking the law, what we're going to do is make it an unpleasant experience to live in Talalua. Our officers are going to enforce the law to where it's not going to be fun for those troublemakers to live in Talalua. And unfortunately, that's part of the job we're tasked with. We deal with some of the people in situations you guys don't want to have to. And so we're going to be enforcing the law some, but we're also going to be taking people to see resources. We are a resource-heavy town. One of the plans I have after this is I'm going to hold a parkers meeting later this month with the different resource providers within our community, so we can better network as a community on who's receiving services at different places, who's being kicked out from different places for different reasons. But folks, and I know a lot of you tonight have stories to tell, problems that you faced individually, specifically for you. My own self, I grant you, keep those to yourself tonight because there's not very many people in this room that haven't witnessed some of them. We have, I know there's a problem, and it's a growing problem. We were just at H&amp;H Quality Tire late last week on one. It turned out it was a serious deal, that the business owner had to help us take the guy into custody. It was, it was a literal fistfight, advertising him to get him into custody. There are houses that have had to be torn down because of destruction, businesses that have been burned that it looks like, without saying a name, suspect that we have in it is a transient person in Talalua with verified information. There are, there are serious problems taking place. Now, does that mean all, however many transient people we have are causing those problems? No. There are, there are a percentage, a good number of people in Talalua that are without a home right now that have fallen on hard times. And we need to address their support network. For those of you in the treatment field, you understand that that support network is what helps people get back on their feet and stay on their feet. And for some of us, we may not have been homeless, but there was a time in our lives when it was the end of the month, our utility bill was due, and we had $42 in our checking account. And most of us in this room had a list of people we could call to borrow $200 to pay our utility bill due, didn't we? And yet, a lot of these people that we're seeing today, whether it's self-induced or not, do not have those people to call for a ride, for food, for a place to sleep. Granted, some of them are self-induced problems. It's because of drug abuse, it's because of untreated mental health issues, but they don't have that support network. And so what we're going to try to do is help people get to those support services that want it and need it and are willing to take it. And for those that aren't, we're going to enforce the ordinances and laws of the state of Oklahoma, the ordinances of Talalua and the laws of the state of Oklahoma. So I'm thankful for all of you who came out tonight, I know some of you are here as service providers, some of you are here as concerned citizens, and some of you are here as personally affected citizens, that adverse things are happening in your lives because of the rising issue in Talalua with transient population. So I hope as a community we can come together and reduce our number of transients in Talalua. Some by helping find treatment, find housing, find employers to help get them off the streets and stay off. Some, just like they were located here by another city or state, because I'm sure we're going to run into some that say, "Hey, I've got a sister in Podo that says I can live in her house, but I don't have a way to get there, and she doesn't have a way to get..." That officer's going to say, hop in the car and drive her or him to that sister's house so that they are placed somewhere where they have a roof over their head. Now, we're not just going to drive them to a town and kick them out like what's happening to us, because it's happening, folks. It's verified through the people we're talking to. It said, "I was in Vanita, told them I was hungry, and he said, 'Hop in, Talalua serves food five days a week, seven days a week,' and they drive them to Talalua and kick them So, in the end, this is a problem. It's affecting a lot of Talalua. And I don't know if there's one answer that's going to satisfy everyone and is going to take care of the problem. We're going to have to address this on a case-by-case basis. We're, we're going to have to be gentle and patient at times, and we're going to be hard at times with different people, and it just depends. And we're going to have to do that on a case-by-case basis. So at this time, unless the mayor has anything to add, I think it's time now for any ideas you folks have, any opinions you have. By some of the crossed arms in the crowd, I see there's some, there's some pretty strong opinions.
We do have a microphone now.
Oh, we do have a microphone, okay. Is my voice loud enough? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I project pretty well. Yes, Nancy?
I think that, because we're kind of talking solutions.
Yes, ma'am.
From what you said.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that, and I'm talking specifically down around Gwin and Water Street, there, where the stream is.
That's the pools, yes.
And it's not cleared off. I think that if we could, I don't know if it's mowable or what, but I think if that were cleared off better, that that would... And I'm a landlord, and I talked to two other landlords that could not be here. And so one of them has some rental property down there, and he's telling me he thought that it would help if that was cleared off in there, because he's had some things stolen from the red house, and they run into those weeds.
There's a trail system that goes all along that creek on the hillside, too. We've chased many a person through them. Okay?
Can I interrupt one moment?
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot, you have these sheets of paper on your tables, those are available if you want to just write comments or concerns, and leaving your name or contact information is purely optional, wanted, but if you'd like to fill out one of those with questions or concerns, if you don't want to speak publicly.
Or solutions.
Or solutions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
My name is Brandy Donatelli, and I am the business owner on Water Street. I know that a lot of people of Talalua don't realize how busy the homeless is on Water Street and in the park, we witness it every day. Two weeks ago, we had an infant in a car seat in the middle of the road, I had to call the police on that. I had to tear down a house that cost me $10,000 because broken into became very unsettling, burning it and using it as a restroom, drugs, and that cost me out of my pocket $10,000. I've had to revamp my business because of the human waste that we have had to deal with cleaning it. I've dealt with needles, I've dealt with a lot of this. I've also dealt with children coming into our shop asking, you know, "Where's my mommy? Where's my daddy? Can you help me? My mom and daddy are passed out in the park, I don't know where my mommy is." We used to work late at our shop, I can't do that anymore, I have to call the police because they do escort us just to our car that's right there. The children are the part that you don't see when we leave our business. There are three, four, five, seven-year-olds that are walking the street. I can't put them in my car and take them home. I stop, I ask them where their parents are, I don't have a daddy, I don't have a mommy, they're passed out in the park. I call the police, I know I call y'all all the time. It is something that absolutely happens every day. Last week, I had a gentleman come into our shop, burst open, and was screaming cuss words in front of my customers. I've had people move me on my front door, I've had lots and lots of problems. But on the plus side, we have our little church out at Carter Baptist, we donate, we have blankets, people bring those blankets, toothbrushes, shampoo, all these people can, will donate, we'll take them to different places that we know that are trying to help. I think what the problem is, is that a lot of our townspeople are not aware of what the Water Street and downtown people deal with on a day-to-day basis. We have, the drug abuse is horrendous, and the children, that part absolutely just wrenches my heart. I don't know what the solution is, but I do know that in one of our close cities, they are doing a work program, and so far it's working out. And what they do is, they have a list of all of the businesses, of what they would like to have done to their property, or come in and work so many hours. So the, the people that are homeless will go to this place of business, and they're given all of these opportunities to go and do a work. They bring back the card, it's stamped, and the owner of the business will show them, yes, they were here, they worked two to three hours, and so they get to, the person, depending on their, you know, ability to work, that in return shows that they are working for their food, they are working, they're trying to help themselves. I am a firm believer in helping yourself. Yes, I understand that there's a lot that don't want to help themselves, but I feel like that there's some that want to get better. So if we could figure out, and I, and I would help on this committee, if we could figure out a work program, because Donna and Jay, they do an absolutely fantastic job in feeding, absolutely wonderful, but sometimes, you know, let them, let them come in and do dishes and clean the tables and, you know, clean, make them feel like that they're, they're worthy. I have, just two weeks ago, I was at Walmart, and I witnessed two men roughing up an older woman because they wanted money, and she had no money. And so I got out of my vehicle to stop this, I mean, this is my hometown, this is Talalua. This is why our family, Addy's family, has moved here from Houston. We love our town, but we also are invited to people that are coming into our town, it's growth, but the homeless is, it's putting a little blemish, and not saying that all are putting blemishes, but it's there, and that's what people are focusing on. But I see and I witness in this park, the little kids cannot play in this park. There are drunks, there are druggies, I see, I didn't even know what a tweaker was, I thought she was dancing and doing all this. It was not a dance. But you've got kids that the parents can't even take them to a park to play. That's where we caught projects, I mean, that's where we grew up. You can't do it anymore. So I want the comfort of Water Street back, I want the comfort of our parks back. What we can do, I think that the work program is a wonderful thing that we need to look into. I'm not educated on it, but I will say I will get that way. And it is something that, that we could find volunteers to, to do what it takes, they got a bed, they get a shower, they get food, and they, they get clothing where they could go out into the public. I'm just, I'm a concerned Talaluanian, a business owner, I've been here 30, 40 years with my business. I can't tell you, it's a day-to-day thing, it's a day-to-day, but I can't afford, I can't afford to build a fence around our parking, I can't afford to do all of this. It's, it's a concern, and I really appreciate the police coming every time that we call.
Some, a couple of things I forgot to mention in my talk. We've got five officers in Bike Patrol School right now that'll be out, that'll give us eight total bike officers. So you'll see a lot more Bike Patrol downtown, Water Street, in the parks during the daytime. We are also averaging about 160 arrests a month for the police department. That, I mean, that's not all transient, that's total for the police department. We're, we're arresting quite a few people a day, it's just, we're spending about six man-hours a day on transient calls of some kind, whether it be shoplifting, whether it be responding to a lost child or a child, just like what Ms. Donatelli's describing. So about six man-hours a day we're spending on transient-related calls. So, next comment, Marty?
Quick question, another problem. Your best guess of it, how big of a problem? Do you have a number of the class transient?
I don't have a hard number yet, I will disclose this. I would venture to guess, oh, somewhere between 60 and 100, maybe, depending. And that's not all living downtown, that's in, you know, even outside the ceiling, some will end up here some, but I'd say, Jay, I mean, you guys are being close, 60 to 100 would be close. We're hoping by the end of summer, we will have an accurate number and have most people cataloged and flagged in our reporting system.
And then right now, what happens when one of them commits a crime? You take them in, you spend our resources to...
Arresting.
...and then what happens? How many times does that cycle go over and over and over?
I mean, this charge is, as long as they're in Talalua, as long as they continue to commit crime, you know, that's, these transients don't have money to pay fines, and so they're racking up warrants through the city, and they don't have money to pay, and so a warrant's issued, and then we arrest them, and then they see the judge, and they spend 10 days in jail, and then they get back out, and after 60, 90 days, another warrant's issued, and we arrest them, and they spend 10 days in jail. And that's just on one charge. So it's, it's, it's a cycle, it's a hamster wheel for sure for some of these folks, and our hope is to be able to help some of these get off the hamster wheel, regardless of water problems. We've all been stuck in the undertow one point in time or not in our life. We're hoping we can pull some of these people out of the undertow and help them be successive citizens. And the ones that aren't, the ones that are breaking the law, we're going to employ, we're going to crack down on them. So, next comment, Jackie, I'll let you go because Nancy's already had one.
Are you counting?
One of the, one of the biggest issues is, is there's no place for these people to sleep. There, there is no place. There's the men's shelter, which will hold 16 at maximum capacity. There's a couple of houses that'll do families, you've got to get approved to give them. That's it. We opened our church up during the winter, we started in January, 26 nights, we had 169 overnight guests. Okay, that's with one person staying there sleeping with them. You know, that's a lot of people, but they don't have any place else to go. It was below freezing, you know, and it's just, whatever you think of the homeless people, it's not right to let them freeze to death.
And it is probably, resource-wise, it is the shortage, it is the deficiency in Cherokee County, is we don't have enough beds for the people who need beds. So, yes, ma'am?
Where did, I mean, this seems to have happened just almost overnight, where did, where are these people coming from? Like, when you arrest them, where are they from?
All over, whether it's in Oklahoma, I mean, we have, we have a registered sex offender right now that's transient who got out of the penitentiary in the state of Oregon, and they bought him a bus ticket to Oklahoma because his brother married a woman and lived in Talalua, but his brother died 10 years ago.
Can we get him a bus ticket?
Well, my officers have, have offered to donate, to pitch in money out of their pocket to buy bus tickets for those that need a way out of Talalua. So, but it, they're coming from all over. And, you know, we have hospitals here, we have resources here, we have...
Hit that, hit that waiter.
Healthcare, food, you know, not, not a lot of towns feed seven days a week, not, not a lot of towns do, they don't have resources. Talalua's a resource-heavy town, we, we have a lot of people doing a lot of things for people in need. Whether it's on a daily basis, or we see it every week, every month as a community, when somebody runs into major problems, how much the people in Cherokee County come together to help them, don't we? Raise tens of thousands of dollars for families in need. It's the same thing for people every day needs. We have, we have a lot of people that are, that are helping, that are trying to help. And we need to, we need to make that network a little more efficient as far as communication between those programs, and that's something I hope that we can help do. And then once again, there is no one answer for every person we deal with. So, yes, Nancy?
Any idea how many are veterans?
No, don't, but I have already contacted the Muskogee VA and have a, have a, almost a quick access contact there to help people get to, the VA has an entire department just for homeless. And so those homeless people, we, we'll be able to get over there, and they have our officer's name, and he'll be able to walk in the door and get in to see somebody right then.
So do the children that are homeless, do they go into like a foster care, or what, what do you do about the children?
It just kind of depends, DHS has been called on some of those instances when parents go to jail, or when it's a situation where parents aren't providing the care that the law requires. Usually it's either Indian Child Welfare or Department of Human Services. Yes, ma'am?
You have a comment?
Okay. Let me go to this side real quick, I'll come back to you.
I want to stand up because I can't speak very loudly. I do not work for the VA, but my company has a grant through the VA. So I do a lot of outreach to different agencies and organizations, but if you are just a community person, I have not had a chance to talk to you, we do house veterans, their household, we enroll their whole household if they are homeless. They do have to prove they're low-income, they do have to prove their veteran status, and we can help them order a D214, we can help them get state insurance, whatever we need to do. We help with rent, we help with utilities, we help with housing supplies, we help with transportation. So there's a lot that we can do, but we also do rely on trying to link up to other services. We are a housing-first program, so we recognize that they have issues that they need help with, but we really feel like they can't focus on those things that they need help with until they have a place to be at home. So we try to work on housing first, and then, and if you need us to come screen them, I will come out, I'll do a screening, see if they qualify. And sometimes it goes rather quickly, and sometimes it doesn't, it depends on the client that we're serving. But anyway, that's, I just want to, I have some information about a program here, if anybody wants it to see.
What's the name of your program?
Introduce yourself. Oh, I'm sorry. So my name is Louise Muselman, I work for Ty Boys Community Action, it's a support service for veteran families. Our grant actually covers 24 counties. Our, our grant actually covers twenty-four counties. Um, I cover Cherokee County, Agar County, Sequoia County, and my office is in Muskogee. But anyway, I have information.
Can you please say your, the name that you work for again?
KaiBoys Community Action, supportive service for veteran families.
Okay, first word is she, the one?
KaiBoys.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am?
If you see Kai's bus. I'm Lisa Look, I'm with the VA Homeless Program in Muskogee, Oklahoma. I really appreciate you all coming out. I'm going to leave my pamphlet and I'm going to leave my business cards. If you have a veteran in this community in need of services, send them to me. Have them call me, text me, email me. I've been established in your community, I'm also, I own a house here in Talalquah. So I'm a community member. But I've worked for the VA now for, I don't know, going on five or six years, I start to lose track after a certain time. But prior to going to work for the VA as a readjustment counselor and now a case manager for Tribal HUDBASH, that's a partnership between the VA Homeless Program and, right now Cherokee Nation is the tribe I'm assigned to, but there's five here in northeastern Oklahoma that applied for the grants and were awarded them. And they are strictly for homeless veterans or veterans that are at risk of homelessness. This particular grant is for tribal veterans. But I don't turn down any veteran. I don't care who they are, even if they're not a veteran, if they're a widow of a veteran, if they're homeless, if they're a child of a veteran. I don't turn anybody away because at my heart, I'm a social worker, and I've been doing this since Jesus was a baby. And I started out working at one of the largest community mental health organizations in the state of Oklahoma, known as Family and Children's Services. And I've worked for every small-town agency in between since I left Tulsa. Predominance of what I deal with is homelessness, substance abuse, and mental health issues. You're a small town that has big city problems. And you have a chief of police that sounds like you've got his head screwed on straight because he's not afraid to talk to other cities and towns that are experiencing the same problems and maybe have been experiencing it longer than you have. I know that as a VA homeless representative, we have what's called, and this is under the federal government, what's called a point-in-time count. Happens on the same day every year, and every agency that receives any state or federal money is encouraged to participate. I cover this county, I cover the fourteen counties of Cherokee Nation, but for the point-in-time count for the VA, I became in charge of Cherokee County, and I work with KaiBoys quite frequently. And we actually did the point-in-time count and housed up for the day over at the Day Center. And if I had a boss who wasn't such a nervous Nellie, I actually found out where two homeless encampments are outside of the city limits of Talalquah. And I wanted to go traipse out there to do my survey on them, and my boss said, "No, no, no, you're not going to do that." So hopefully next year she'll change her mind. But if there are any resources that you need, Cherokee Nation, Veterans Affairs Department, the director, I'm going to call her out because I love doing that, Barbara Forman, and her assistant, Kim Reel, they are a huge resource for any homeless-related resources that we have here in Talalquah. They keep a running list of the community providers and people, churches and private individuals who say, "Hey, if you have a veteran that's homeless and he doesn't have any furniture, you know, if it's a family and they need a baby bed", we've got a list of people. So I know there's a lot of really giving, caring people. There are, like the chief said, there are people who just want to do bad because of addiction, because of mental health, because they came from a dysfunctional home that most of us couldn't even imagine. The business owner that talked about, you know, his little children coming up. I found a five-year-old wandering around at seven-thirty in the morning in his diaper and a t-shirt, and I just, as a social worker, instinctively knew this was going to be a DHS kind of morning. I was going to be calling him, and I did. And stayed with the child until DHS showed up and took the child and called the police and found out where the child lived and all that. But I think that if we do what we're doing now and we network and take each other's cards and write down each other's information, like I'm going to get the chief's homeless liaison officer and going to be real good friends with him. Um, I've made friends with a lot of landlords in the community because I house Native American veterans and veterans in this community. And it's one that I prefer, them in Rogers County. Tulsa don't care to send anybody to Tulsa. They have resources there, abundance, but have a lot of triggers for our homeless veterans. They're trying to start a new life and they're trying to, you know, live that American dream, and they're trying to overcome and conquer their demons. And to me, that can just be demon central. So the small-town draw is, is important. But as a community mental health provider who worked with the homeless population, not just veterans, before I came to work for the VA, and I'm going to call out the agency that I worked for in Claremore, um, we worked for an inpatient unit that no longer exists. And I constantly had OHP coming at all hours of the day and night to drop off their transients that they found out on the turnpike. And oftentimes, they were dropped off by the Greyhound bus, by St. Louis, Dallas, Minnesota. The guy I had the furthest away was Boston. He paid seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars of some church's donated money to get dropped off at the turnpike in, outside, in Rogers County, at the turnpike there. And he was off his medication, didn't know where he was at, totally paranoid, and probably has substance abuse issues. So he came into our unit and we got him stabilized. And that becomes a problem and a drain on city resources. But I saw that town do exactly what you all are doing and made huge success within a year. Their numbers dropped and their police chief came and talked to us and, you know, because I also lived in that community. So I wasn't somebody who just visited for my day job. I lived there, I was invested there, had my, had my children going to school there. Um, so I'm invested in the solution. I'm not invested in pointing fingers. Because we all can get paranoid. I have, own a home here, and I got smart and got one of those cameras to watch the front and back of my house because my house got, what do they call it, kick door? Middle of the day, somebody goes onto my back porch and kicks the door in, and I pull in at five o'clock and open my door and see my back door open, and I was like, I know that didn't happen, so I called the police. And they said, "You need to maybe invest in some cameras." And a lot of the crime that happens in my well-established neighborhood happens when, oddly enough, school is out. Hmm, wonder why that is? Petty theft, they broke into my daughter's car. I left a FedEx box, got delivered, and that got picked up. My neighbor saw the young man who did it. So, um, you know, I just want to caution everybody that I realize that some business owners have been drastically affected. Some individuals have been drastically affected. I just want to encourage you not to automatically think that it's a homeless person who did that. Because it could just be somebody who has mental health or substance abuse issues.
I just want to say. Thanks a lot.
Okay, you talked earlier about resources.
Yes ma'am?
How do you get these people from where they are to the resources? And do we have resources in our town? And a couple of things, I probably helped a young lady a few years back, and it's just, in each place that you take them, there's limited in what they can do for them. I had another experience in Muskogee with a young man in my apartment complex. I talked to the chief, and he said that if they don't have a bargain, that there's nothing you can do about them. So, I, I don't know how to get them from where they need to go, from the homelessness into people who can help them.
Well, that's one thing that we're working on, Cherokee, Cherokee Nation Career Services provided us their list, they have built of resources in the county.
But how do you actually get them?
Well, our officer's going to drive them there. Our officer, our homeless liaison will be, like I said, he'll be a taxi a lot of days. Um, for those that need a ride to wherever it is, he'll give them a ride. Because once again, one of the, you know, housing, transportation, employment are three of the biggest things you need in your life to be successful. I, I mean, aside from substance abuse or whatever it is, if you don't have a real, if you don't have a job, if you don't have a car, you're struggling to, you're struggling to keep from drowning.
So does the city have a grant rider that, because with it being such a wide problem throughout the United States, there has to be some grant money to help these towns to provide this service?
There is, we're just about a month late on the cutoff for those for this fiscal year, for the federal fiscal year. Um, and hopefully this summer will give us, we've been in contact with Ms. Sarah Johnson here. She's found some possible grant resources for us, and we found another one through the Police Department that hopefully after this summer, the data we collect, the talks we have with our service providers, it'll hopefully give us a better direction on what we need grant funding-wise to help, help combat the issues and help these people help themselves at times. Yes Jackie?
She got you, I hit two. So, is there any, anything on the horizon to have a building for the people to stay in? And can it be outside the city with it so that it's not, I mean, the fire department gets stampeded with stuff? Businesses downtown, there's business owners that got approached?
Right now, I don't know that there's anything plans-wise through the city of Talalquah, I don't know of any.
No, but we're hoping that through this conversation, we get a committee together to start planning. I have some property for sale.
Chief Hammons?
Yeah, just to speak, I've worked closely with Jackie on this last year, trying to help her in her situation, trying to keep some of the homeless out of the cold. Uh, I just ask that people do keep in mind that we try to be as lenient as we can, but if we bring those people in, there's codes, there's laws, there's safety procedures that have to be followed. And unfortunately, it's kind of how it happens, other than enforcement. If you, if you have a church, if you're going to have people stay here, there's needs have to be met. Codes have to be met, laws have to be met, and I spoke with Jackie about that. She stayed there with, with her, I guess, occupants there for a while, and she would stay there at my request. Somebody's got to stay up with her to watch because you got to have a fire watch. Uh, it's, it's important, it's important to keep people safe off the street, but it's just as important to keep them safe if they're asleep and there's a fire breaks out, something happens. You're talking sprinkler systems and fire alarms and that kind of thing. So it's not just as simple as bringing them in and letting them sleep on your keys. There has to be, anytime there's assemblies like that, there has to be codes and life safety issues, have good rest. So, just, just want to throw that out there.
Sarah, Chief?
Yeah, um, I know there's been some talk about embedding mental health service providers with the law enforcement. And I'm just curious about whether or not that is going to happen and what needs might be out there for that to be more of a successful program, if there needs to be grant money going towards that. And one more question before you answer it, is the liaison going to just be for the summertime?
First question was, she had heard talks of possibly embedding a mental health provider, clinician with the officer this summer. And yes, that's something I've reached out to Creyotes about specifically, trying to get that to happen so that basically at least part of the week, we'll have a social worker, a caseworker, ride in with the officer that will help us get people to service and help us not be Neanderthal cops when we don't need to be Neanderthal cops. Um, and then the second question, what was it Sarah?
Is your homeless liaison going to just be through?
Right now, he'll just be through the summer, yes. Um, and hopefully by the end of the summer, he'll have enough information gathered and we've, other street officers have seen it, and we, we get a strong enough program that it won't necessarily have to be in one individual officer doing it, that we're doing it as a department the same way. Um, this is to try to get a head start on it because honestly, not only are we responding to transient calls, we're responding to, you know, a hundred and twenty calls sometimes in a day as a department, and that's twelve officers for the day working total. Um, you know, we're, our evening shift runs from call to call to call almost their entire shift most days. Literally calls waiting for us to get to it. So this is to help us get a head start, someone who can be dedicated to it to, because it's a, it's a, a mounting obstacle that we're facing. And with every day, it gets a little bigger and a little harder to get in front of and get a grasp on it. It's overwhelming at times. And to be quite honest, I am not excited about taking this on as the Police Department because I know in this process, a lot of you in this room are going to be mad at me at some point in time during it. Some of you are thinking we're doing, we're being too hard, and some of you are thinking we're being too soft. I'm really putting us, in a sense, in a no-win situation because there are so many differing opinions. But it's a problem Talalquah has, and besides being the chief of police, I've lived here my whole life. And it's something that we need to come together as a community and address. Not as Nate King, the chief, but as Nate King, the guy who grew up here, whose kids still live here, whose grandkids hopefully will live here in ten years or so. Yes, yes sir?
Yeah, I'm Pastor Merrill, First Christian Church, knew the Talalquah, I'll give you the say, five years. Um, I worked with Tulsa Metropolitan Community, we're the ones that started the Day Center for the homeless. And I say that because, uh, for a couple of things that we found out. One, it does take a building, it really takes everyone because it's everybody's problem. And it's everybody having to work together. One of the frustrations, and I, I hope before we get out of here, I keep hearing, "Where do you get all the resources?" I've been struggling, I've got a few people that tell me a few things, but if we had one area where we could say, "These are all the resources that are available, there are people who go around and, and if we could just communicate a little bit better", I would be in a lot better shape. One of the things also that I mentioned, and I know you can really come up with stereotypes really quickly and make assumptions about this population, one of the most surprising things we found out were how many children were on the street, how many mentally challenged people were on the street, how many veterans were on the street, how many people who were elderly on the street. And, and then, because we were making assumptions, we were trying to throw good money at the bad money. What we found out, there are parts of the population that those bad folks have to be, you know, push, you know, we have to deal with that. But the idea to group everybody in one group is what's, you know, is so frustrating. Because again, as a Christian, and I, and it is frustrating, and I even have to say this to Christians, Matthew twenty-five forty, "The least of these, they are not dogs, they're not animals", and I've seen people treat folks like that, and it's, it angers me that folks are treating folks like these are not human beings. And so I am trying to say and you'll be surprised how many children or relatives or people in this room know somebody, they're related to somebody. And again, I just appeal to your, your, that, that part of us that, you know, we do it in love. And I'm just saying, it is frustrating because there are bad people. But please, please remember, we are dealing with God's people.
Yes sir? Dave, I'll get to you next, I'll be paying your hand a lot.
My name's Chris Thompson, I just moved here in February, going to school at ASU and stuff like that. You know, the one thing I noticed is, is everybody wants, 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 and want, if you think about it, is, is, you know, these people are just like, start out homeless, lack of ability to make good choices, lack of ability to follow through. You know, so like, you've got to implement something that, that forces them to take action. You have to, you have to do something, okay? So if you're homeless and you get stopped or whatever the situation may be, you have to implement some kind of self-proving program where they're forced to take action. And that way hopefully, maybe, if you save one, you jump, you jump a lot.
Dave?
You know, homeless people are not disposable. So we're here, and I think what this, what the intent of this community meeting was, was really to concentrate on a solution. And, you know, I talked to you before we got started, there's amazing grant, I talked to you about grant holders, there's amazing grant riders in this community. There, you know, we could put together a task force, there's a lot of caring people here, a lot of concerned people. And I've been in healthcare for forty-three years this month. I'm not going to start on my stories about care of the homeless and the lack of access to care and on and on. But I think putting together a task force and maybe searching out and putting together some of the stories we've already heard about resources, what's the best practices, you know, available? And let's make it happen. There's outreach teams that sometimes goes to homeless group housing. We can't force these people to walk into these people to walk into AA or NA, many of them are mentally ill and are self-medicating, so, so they're here, they're among us, because our social network is broken, and I think with their non-disposable, put together a task force, find out best practices, get some grant writers, and let's deal with it, let's help our business owners.
And we are working on those great, possible grant opportunities, we found some good ones if we can, you know, by next year, hopefully we'll have a better game plan as to what we actually need.
Chief King, just one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
While you're talking about the task force, if you would be interested in helping with that task force, would you please, 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 later and make sure that we've got your name and that indication on it?
I just wanted to add to what home is. Home is more than a roof over your head and a meal on the table, because these people have lost a sense of connection with other human beings, and they're looking for that and place that makes them feel at home, they're looking for what we have here tonight, it's called community, where we all come together to take care of each other, because I don't want people that have businesses or homes to be broken into, or children to be wandering the street, but I think we have to look at them as fellow human beings, not just, I really don't like the label of transient, they're people, and I think we should refer to them as people, we could even come up with a better way of calling them. You know, as a minority, a lot of times when people give you a name, it evokes a lot of characteristics that you don't wanna exhibit, and it creates an environment and an expectation that we name things, and I think we're gonna be really open-minded to what it means, and I know that we have to do things by the book, but when the book becomes an obstacle to being able to open your church, run all night prayer service so people can keep warm, I think there's something going on there besides just trying to keep them safe. I think we need to look and see what prejudices we might have towards them, I think we need to be honest about that, that we might have, me as a pastor, I didn't spend time with homeless people until I opened up our church. Jackie said we're gonna do this, and I said, okay, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I still have two or three of those individuals that come back to our church, and they're not on a regular basis, because their life is upside down, it's chaotic, but the fact that I've seen them at least seven or eight times since it got warm, says to me that they're still looking for a place where they're seen, where their, people will listen to them and people will receive them, and that's more than a meal, and that's more than putting them in a career program and trying to make them a model citizen, not everybody wants to be a model citizen like we pictured, there's all ideas of how we wanna live to be happy, and I think what we need to look is what makes them feel fulfilled, what gives them the opportunity to be the person that they would like to be, and what creates the environment that reinforces that, and I think we have a lot of opportunity here. I really don't believe that people are picking Tal qual Oklahoma out of the whole United States because we're the mecca of homeless resources. I don't think we should generalize the situation with one or two cases, if I took the people that I met and generalized it based off of just my experience with them, then I could classify half of y'all as homeless or potential to be homeless. You know, I think we do have to take it on a case by case, I don't think we can classify them in any particular way. In my experience, the meth addiction in this area seems to be high, I was a pastor on the north side of Tulsa, I didn't see it as much as I do here, and so in my mind, I'm thinking, it's higher here, and somebody's gonna say, well, no, on the north side it's more spread out, here it's more contained in one area, but I see the broken families that come from it, so just when we see one person that's without a home, just think, that's somebody's brother or sister, that's somebody's daughter or son, that's somebody's parent, somebody's grandparent, it comes from all walks of life, and I think we just need to remember it, you know, but for the grace of God, it could be us that are losing our child, we get stuck in the car, and then the car breaks down, and the police tow it because they have to, because the law says so, and then they can't get their car back because they can't pay the fee to get it out of the impound, and then they're stuck, and they don't know what to do, so we can be as vulnerable as they are, I think we'll start to understand a little bit more, and I'm sorry that you can write 100 grants in the next three or four years, it's not gonna go away, it's always gonna be with us, it's just how we choose to respond to it and how we continue to change to continue to serve those that need to be served.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, two things, one, Creyox has a community development committee meeting every month, meets on Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month, from noon to one, out at the New York Action Building right off of Fourth Street, and they're looking for opportunities to expand Creyox as a critical partner in being able to address issues related to homelessness, and earlier I heard you mention an appointed time count, that's part of what's necessary in order to access high grants through their continuum of care, which is a federal project for addressing issues related to homelessness, and you mentioned you have a grant writer, they need, they'll have to have that kind of information in order to be able to submit grants to, and that does provide a real opportunity for addressing issues related to homelessness.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer Cole Robinson, I'm the Director of Helping Community Services for the United Two of A M. So one of the things that I'm happy you're looking at a grant, but some of the obstacles that I've worked with the lady today, who is homeless, some of the direct obstacles she had today will not be covered by a grant. She had, she just started a job, she's not gonna get paid in two weeks, her and her two children are currently homeless right now. To be able to apply for an apartment in Tal qual, she had to go to the internet, which she didn't have, to apply online, to pay $20 for the background check, which she didn't have, because she doesn't have a checking account. She was able to come to my office and do the application online, we were able to pay as the department her background fee to get into this apartment, but those are the obstacles that I see on a daily basis as a service provider, are things that's not gonna be covered by a grant. Background checks for every apartment complex that Tal qual now has a background check, anywhere from 12 to $40, anywhere. So they're, they're struggling to have a low-paying job anyway, they may not have a checking account, to have a debit card to pay this background check, they may have unfortunately some history that is gonna keep them from getting that, from the past criminal history, or even credit check now, they are doing credit checks on apartment builders. So these are the issues as a service provider, I'm seeing our people have to deal with on a daily basis of even trying to get their basic need met of housing, and if you don't have housing, somebody else mentioned it, you're not stable, you're not gonna have, our children cannot function in that environment that we're expecting them to go to school and behave and have good grades, but they don't know where they're gonna spend the night at. Those are the things as a service provider I see, and that I would love to see people come together and try to figure out, how are we going to address this? We're not even talking about deposits yet, they want a first month rent, a deposit, and then I don't know, to me, our utility deposits are very expensive when you're adding everything else to that, so you have a minimum pay wage, paying job at best, children, and now we're looking at, if you can, if you can find a home in Tal qual for $400, you're looking at $400 deposit, $400 worth of rent, and a minimum of $400 for utilities, that's $1,200 right off the bat to get into your house, that we're trying to help them. We've got to look at those issues too, as to exactly what the barriers in the community we're setting for as well.
Is there any, is exactly what everybody's talking about, Nate? They have to go somewhere to be, they have to have a bed, they need, and shower, and a place to eat, so yes, we, we might have all these resources, but during that day, they can go and they can get help, but then after it closes, they have no place to go. So what I'm wanting to know is, is there, is there a way that we could, the city could purchase through a grant and then have volunteers to help run this, to kinda have like the old-fashioned, I don't remember the word that I'm trying to find.
Boarding house.
Boarding house, where, and then that's where your work program comes in. So I mean, there are several buildings in Tal qual that have been empty for a long time, so is there something that this community has so much care and love, I mean, this is amazing, so they don't want them to be homeless, they want them to have a place to sleep, they can't sleep in Walmart, they can't sleep in our libraries, they can't sleep at the courthouse, they can't sleep underneath your car, I've seen it all, they can't sleep underneath the park benches, they've gotta have a place to go, so what can Tal qual do for our future? Because this is a problem that we have right now, and it's gonna grow, so we've got to focus on a building that they can go into and feel like they can spend the night and be safe. Children, it's not fair for the children to be under cars or under the park bench or under the little downtown little porches, it's not fair. So I think once we have a home where they can go to, with the grant money, that's something that the city can come together and work together and provide that, and that's what I see as trying to help. I mean, resources are great, don't get me wrong, they're fantastic, and Tal qual's fantastic, but if they don't have a place to stay or sleep, then they, they're still out on their streets, and we don't want that, we want them to feel it, we want them to be better, we want them to work towards having a better life, if they wanna choose Tal qual, okay, but we have got to figure out some way to help the situation.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
The problem that I see with that is, what bureaucratic entity is they gonna be put in charge of that, and then how do we govern that type of overseeing of people who have definitely lost their way and are very vulnerable, so.
So Tulsa and some of the other cities who are developing programs along this line are working with a third party, with a charitable organization, because the city itself can't buy this structure and put a day work program together, it has to be a third entity.
But, but who, is it gonna be somebody private, I mean?
I don't know, we're just talking theory right now anyway.
That's what I'm saying, it's, there's so much more to it, I mean.
Correct, but we've gotta start somewhere, which is why we're here tonight, we've gotta start somewhere to help these folks.
But we definitely need to be asking these questions.
Correct, correct, it is a good question to think about in the planning phases, yes, ma'am.
I'm Deborah Spurk, and I'm on the board of the Men's Shelter. I can't hear her, I'm sorry.
She's on the board of the Men's Shelter, has been for several years.
Anyways, we rent a house, men cannot get grants, and that's why so many grants go for families and women, because they're out there, there are not grants for men, and those that there are, are so limited, so we rely on donations, money, everything, to run that shelter, and it's been there over 10 years. For you all that don't know where it is, it's right behind Bank First, it's a house that we rent, it used to be the old tin shop.
The old steel shop.
Yes, and we need board members, and we need people to come in and go to the meetings and see, but the, the aspect, you have to have insurance, you have to work with the fire department, you have to work with all these organizations, and it's very expensive. Our basic is 1,600 a month to house 16 men, and that's not providing food, that's just a roof over their head and a place to shop, and we, we are not equipped to do, we want them to go to all these resources. I'm also on the BFW Auxiliary, I'm the Tricia Downhill Auxiliary, so I work with the veterans, I work with the groups down there, I'm on the nutrition board and have been for 35 years, and I see all these disabilities and all these organizations. I retired from HHS Hospital, I retired from D H S, and I was in homes and saw all these problems, they're not new, they've been here forever, and when I worked Tulsa County, I started Tulsa County at D H S, working with the homeless and the shelters, and they just have lists, these people have lists where to go, who serves better, who has the best food, who has all these things, they write it on the walls, go here, you can get this, so the more we provide, the more the network needs. We are, we're on the HMS system down here, the national network of homeless, that tracks them nationwide when they go from one shelter to another shelter, so that is all out there, but I would like to have a whole lot of these resources, the veterans, I don't know about these other agencies, and I don't think other people know about the other agencies either.
That's one, that's one of the biggest things that we've seen, police department wise, is we have so many resources, but nobody knows what the next one's doing or what other services are providing. That's one of the things we're hoping to help bring together, is to almost be that center hub of, for you to call us and say, I've got so-and-so who needs this, and we can say, oh, let's call them, so that's what we're hoping to help unify there and make it a little more efficient, is that availability of resources for people.
And after speaking with the mayor and, oh, sorry, and the police chief, we're gonna create a page on the website that will try to consolidate those resources, kinda have a hub, like you said, he's gonna work on his side, we'll try to work with Cherokee Nation, and then everybody else that's in here, you can write down where you're from, if you'd like to be included on that list, we'd like to get a central resource list of sorts for the city of Tal qual that we have to offer.
Nate?
Yes, ma'am.
We have an expert in the room that has done great work, Miss Yogi in this area, Mr. Rick Shaw's here with the Gospel Rescue Mission, and he, they operate a program there that's phenomenal, so we could benefit, Tal qual could greatly benefit from listening to what you said.
All right, the numbers are gonna go up, hate to say that, we're gonna do everything, we waited too long to really get things started, we also passed a marijuana law, that means our numbers will go up from that, it's a lot harder to keep your job when you're smoking weed, it's just a fact of life, so our number's gonna go up, but we gotta start changing how we're doing things, we don't wanna get like Portland where they're actually literally living in the interstate, you drive down the interstate, north, south, east, west, they're living in the median of the interstates, that is where we're heading, head cities are going up in every city in this nation, we are not alone, and the reason this has happened is that we treat these men and women when they show up as if they're poor little boobaloves who can't do anything for themselves, and we treat them like children, what do children do? They wait around for more resources, you gotta take care of them, you gotta take care of them, and you never help them grow and get their self-movement out, so our numbers are gonna go up, because we have to keep taking care of them, we're not developing skills in their life set to help them move on. So our model, what we started doing, and all I can tell you, that model I just described does not work, it's failed, it's increased our numbers of poverty in the nation considerably, but the model we use is, we get to know these men and women, what are their hopes and dreams, what do they have inside of them that's potential, and we start with that model, I can't help but be excited about what they have inside them, they're gonna help our community do great incredible things, they just don't believe they can do it, and so my job is to help them find out what that is, and help them get moving in that direction. We have a young lady at the mission, Gospel Rescue Mission in Muskogee, would love to give you a tour, show you around what we're doing, but there's a young lady there right now who wants to be a doctor, she doesn't believe, she's got it in her, she doesn't believe she has that, that in her, she doesn't have any education yet, she's, but what we're doing, we're trying to get her a job at St. Francis Hospital, just cooking, she's got some skill for being able to be a cook, and if she can get there, then she starts getting surrounded by medical people, and her odds go up, she goes, oh, I need this education, I need that, and starts moving her in that direction. Other young man wants to be a chef, he doesn't wanna be a cook, but right now he's cooking, he's learning to be a cook, so he can eventually move into being a chef, we find out what their dreams are, and I can't help but be excited about it, I can't help but wonder why you're not living that dream right now, and then I'm gonna find out what those triggers are. We have a young lady who every time she put on a baseball hat, she's getting ready to go relax, so what was I able to do, every time she put that baseball hat on, I said, hey, Shereen, come here, sit down, let me talk with you before you go out today, because I see you have your baseball hat on, I see what's going on, and that worked really well till she figured out that's why I knew. But we help them get through that, so if you have an addiction, we gotta help you break that addiction first, but right now we just have this follow-up, they're gonna, they're at the Men's Shelter, they're gonna come to the Gospel Rescue Mission, they're gonna go to John 316 in Tulsa, and then they're gonna go other places to do the rounds, and never really get the help, they're gonna go to every agency they possibly can, we talk about veteran service, I love serving our veterans, but they're not all created the same, when I was in, those who were veterans, you know that there's some slackers, you know there are people who aren't trying, we can't treat them all the same, we can't lump all the veterans together, we have got to figure out what's inside of them, what we can use to make our community better. These can be a great resource for our community. I really believe there's a homeless, a young man experiencing homelessness, that's the term I use, person experiencing homelessness. Otherwise, if they're a homeless person, they always got to be homeless to define their identity. They're a person experiencing homelessness. There's someone out there that has a cure for cancer. Just think about our meth cooks. You think of the science that goes into cooking meth? They can figure it out. So the point is that we can help fix these folks. We can help them find a new life. But we can't just do handouts. We're going to have to figure out a way to help them learn and grow and live whatever they've got inside of them.
Yes, sir.
There are communities in America that have ended homelessness, chronic homelessness. I haven't heard anybody mention that. They can, you can study what they've done. You know about the strategies, their methods, and the practices. I haven't heard much about that. The other thing I haven't heard much about are the gainers and losers that are associated with homelessness. There are people that gain from that social problem, and then there are the rest of us who lose from it. We need to take a look at that. That's a very moral inventory a community has to do. There are providers that are helping, but they're not really solving the problem. If there's a solution, and there is, and it's in the literature, it can be found, and it's well documented, it needs to be studied. And I'm recommending that, there's a lot of good ideas in here, but there isn't a whole lot of difference between what I'm hearing in this room that I heard 25 years ago in Tulsa, it's the same thing. And they made a lot of mistakes, we're making some of the same mistakes here. And there's got to be an openness to maybe we don't know what to do, and how do we find out that? And I just cannot help but say that. Been quiet for a long time. I know a good number of people in the room, and if people are intellectually honest, which I'm not hearing a lot of, then it's going to require some hard questions of everyone. Thank you.
Yes, Jackie, last one, you only get three.
Well, actually, I just wanted everybody to know that Robin is here, and she's the librarian. And I don't know how many of you all go to the library on a regular basis, but the home, there are many homeless that hang out there. And so she has a different perspective on it than all of us have. I mean, so maybe Robin could say something. Y'all be bad at me.
We do have homeless at the library every day. They're outside or inside, either way. You know, sometimes, you know, some of them, you just get tired of the daycare centers, so they come there and hang out, there are different ones. Usually, this is no problem. Sometimes, the public feels it's a problem. Usually, as far as dealing with them, it's not a problem. And occasionally, it is, because we have different groups. Groups change, you know? Some are more polite than others. Sometimes, we have to kind of talk about, watch how you talk and things like this. It's a little bit of a problem. We have had people sometimes sleep outside, or they hang out and, you know, drink outside and things. But that's things that we try to deal with, and we're certainly hoping that we can be a solution in some ways to things. We've hired, again, a part-time security person to help because, you know, right now it's summer and we have increased numbers of people coming with children. But our security person will be year-round, working a staggered schedule. The library has a lot of resources that can be helpful, I think, too. We have internet computers that people can come use. We allow certain nuttimes that people, a certain number of times a day, you can get on a DPU, getting on it, even if you don't have a car. We offer literacy tutoring at the library. That can be for people who learn, need to learn to read, some of those basic skills like that, could be if they need high school equivalency or citizenship. Those are all things we offer free. And we have volunteers who work with people like that. We have meeting rooms that could be used for any of these things, for groups to meet, or for meeting with individuals, an entity doing that. So I think that the library could help as well as, you know, taking on some of this also.
Can I have a third?
Sure, Nate, you can have a third.
It's a quick one.
Okay.
The man from the Gospel Rescue Mission?
Yes.
Do you use like a questionnaire when people come in?
What we have, they first check in there in the first week. And they fill out, we have an online class that actually asks them what makes them laugh, what makes them sing, what makes them cry, and we'll guide them to us. We kind of get a little background story. And then during that first week, we teach them a basic goal-setting class. And that's where I find out their hopes and dreams, where they want to be. They'll fill out a worksheet, kind of tells me all of those things. Then there's also a program for drug and alcohol relapse, but for everything. It's called a master scale. You can check it out online, you can download it. It is what tells me the triggers are going to be. And that'll help me figure that one out. So you do it in the first week, I get to know who they are. And I'll monitor who they are, and then as I visit, which makes it a little more...
Thank you. Nate, we are at 7:00.
Yes, you may, Mr. Kinn.
I go to the day center through the week and help serve and communicate with people that stop any... What I've noticed here today, we're feeding them, we're resting, we'll be doing the rest of the night. I don't see anybody, very many people here, that go through that day center and sit down and talk with them while they're eating. That's one thing I've noticed. I can go to any table and sit down while they're eating, and they'll talk to you. And it's the only way you're going to find out what they, what their goals are, or where they live, with the survey last week, how they hear about us, what their goals are, are they homeless? And they just want a two-word answer to those questions. They will talk to you. If you'll come down to the day center at noon, I may be stepping out while I'm here. Big boys may not want all of you there. If some of you would filter in and talk with these people, find out what they really, what they really want, that would help the task force.
Okay, thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
I just want to applaud the... For first wanting to have this conversation in the first place and getting it started, because it is something that's arisen in our town, but it's great that we have leaders who are looking to find a solution and want to engage in the community to find that solution. And I want to applaud all the community members who are here, throwing in input, who gave ideas, tried to find solutions, and are going to work with the committee to help try to find a solution for our town, because it's a major thing. And it's just awesome to see how well this community responds whenever something like this happens. And wanting to get to it now that it's here in front of us. And I just want to applaud everyone in the room for showing up and having input in this committee tonight. I thought it's been a great conversation.
How are you?
My name's Amy, I work at Hope House in Cherokee County. We are a shelter, we provide for women and children. We do do background checks for those that are willing to come into shelter, and that is because we do have children, that's for the safety of the children and other residents that may be there. But we do offer, we provide limited transportation. We help with food, we help them, a lot of times they can't get a job because they don't have a social security card, they can't birth certificate. So we help them, we help, you know, get them those, we help them get their IDs. You know, first thing they want to do, obviously, the ultimate goal is housing. But you can't gain housing if you don't have a job or any kind of income coming in. So that's one of the first things we do, is we try to help them, point them in the right direction as far as getting a job. And we have a savings program in place, so once they do get a job, it helps them to save their money. As she was talking about how expensive it is to get into a place with all the audits and this and that. So that program's in place to help them put their monies back, so when they're ready to get a place, they have that kind of set aside. And we also help as an organization, put money forward to help them get into a place as well. You know, and so we do point them out, or point them in the right direction, but other services, like the day center, you know, we oftentimes, you know, when they're out and about during the day, they can stop in there if they want to, or they come back to the shelter and eat lunch. We have curfew in place just for safety. But we have in-house meetings where we do sit down with them, help them figure out goals and a game plan of what they're going to do and how to get them back on their feet. You know, ultimately, their own home, go back into, you know, just the family unit or whatever.
How many families can you have?
Well, we're really small, it just depends.
I'm Taylor, please hope out. I actually do the HMI-S data entry, which somebody had mentioned earlier. Right now, we have four bedrooms, but that doesn't mean that we'll have, we won't house more than four individuals, we get four families. We've been known to put two individuals to a room at the same time, we're usually full. We're trying to get them, you know, in and out of the room. We keep them long enough that they can, we believe that they can be sustainable.
How long can they stay?
It starts out on a 30-day basis, but we have been known to house them 60 days a day so that they can get a good...
Yes, before I turn to the mayor, thank you, folks, for coming out. There were some good comments today, good questions, good information. And I'm very thankful to see all of you here tonight. So I'll let the mayor close us tonight. You can leave, you can leave.
Thank you, Nate, for coordinating and running this conversation. I hope that you took the opportunity, if you're interested in working on the task force, if you're interested in working on any of these ideas that have been brought forward, that you put that on a piece of paper you'll get with us. If you do have resources available, some contact information, be sure that Jamie gets that information, and we'll put it on the city's website so that at least there's a simple point to access that information. And I just want to say, thank you to every one of you for the heart that you have shown to devote your time to being here for an hour and a half after work, in the middle of the week, to talk about something. Thank you.